Start this meeting with the call to, uh, call this meeting order, start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Uh, Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the public, for which it stands, one nation under God, in the resolve of the Constitution and Justice of the Crown.
Next is invocation by River Tree Wesleyan.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Pastor Dan with, with River Tree and my, my prayer will be brief, but I just want to take a few seconds to share what's fed into that. Our church has been going through the book of Daniel and it's a story of a, a young man who faced incredible challenges as a boy. His city was conquered, uh, he was taken prisoner, forced to live in exile away from his family. And yet he rose to the number two spot in the Babylonian empire. And he served so well when they were conquered by the Persians, they brought him into their court. That didn't happen very often. And the core belief that empowered him and anchored him for that kind of life was the belief that at the end of the day, God is in control of who's in control. Uh, that was his source of humility and his, and his courage. Uh, let me pray for us. Heavenly Father, I, I do believe you have each person here for a reason and, and for a season, and I pray, God, that you would empower them and guide them and help them make decisions, Lord, that, um, continue to increase the health of our community. And, um, the opportunities for a broad range of people, Lord, opportunities that appeal to our better angels. Amen.
Thank you. Let's start with a roll call. She's, can you turn my mic down just a little bit? It's super hot.
Sabers?
Here.
Gold Hammer?
Here.
Dosher? McCardle?
Uh, here.
Barrington?
Here.
Bathke?
Here.
Charks?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. Approval of consent agenda items. Items appearing on the consent agenda may be removed by a city council member for discussion at the beginning of the formal agenda items. Would anyone like to remove anything?
They can send agenda?
Uh, actually, if we could, uh, pull out H, I'll be abstaining from that.
Okay.
Minus H?
Sorry.
Okay, minus H. So how does that work? Are we still approving everything, but Tim's just not approving H? I've never seen this before.
So this would be, you're, you're approving everything but H and then you'll handle H next.
Okay, got it. Perfect. Okay. Motion in a second. Would anyone in the audience like to discuss this? Okay, let's do a roll call for that then.
Sabers?
Aye.
Gold Hammer?
Aye.
Dosher? McCardle?
Aye.
Barrington?
Aye.
Bathke?
Aye.
I.
Chark?
Oh, sorry.
She's excited.
And Smith.
Aye.
I need to go ahead and get my camera.
All right. All right, now we're gonna do H. Set the date for November third for application of Cody Foreman doing businesses, Bullseye and Bertie's thirteen oh one, North Main and a retail on, off sale malt beverage, South Dakota farm and wine license.
Who'd approve?
Mr. McCardle. Second, Mr. Barrington. Further discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to discuss this one? Okay, we'll do a roll call for that one.
Smith?
Aye.
Charks?
Aye.
Bathke?
Aye.
Barrington?
Aye.
McCardle?
Aye.
Gold Hammer?
Abstain.
Sabers?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Next, public comment. If you need to address the mayor and members of city council item that was not on the agenda excluding personnel items, please come forward at the podium and state your name and your concern. Presentations are limited to three minutes. Items will be considered, but no action will be taken at this time. Would anyone like to address the council?
Hi, my name is Katie Hone. I am the world of work intern, um, with Mitchell Main Street and beyond. Um, I chose to do my world of work, uh, here because I'm interested in learning about nonprofit work, um, more social media based things. Um, and basically what makes our downtown work and function well. Um, currently, I just wanted to update you guys on what we have been up to and what we're looking forward to. Uh, downtown trick or treat is this Saturday from two to four. We welcome everyone to walk, come and walk Main Street in their best Halloween attire. All age, all ages are welcome. Um, additionally, upcoming on November first, downtown open house with, uh, the hot cocoa crawl, um, which is a fundraiser for the Mitchell area art council and downtown art walk, um, is happening on November first. Um, we invite everyone to, uh, please, uh, come and support that if you are able. Um, besides that, ladies day out went very well. We have had pretty smooth sailing recently. It's been a really good time. Um, I've learned a lot so far in my short, I think, three or four weeks I've been here, um, and I'm super excited to see what we can continue to do. So, thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the council?
I got, I got one quick thing.
Okay.
I've been getting some people asking me on, will they put the stoplights, Joe, on first and main? Where you, like, if you're head, head north or east or west, there's a turning arrow to go left and a turning arrow to go right. People aren't sure which way to go straight. I mean, if they could, uh, cause I know they got the arrows that go straight and ones that turn. So sometimes you get two people in a lane going straight and then they.
Sure, sure. So before the, before those traffic lights were put up, it was a, um, a right hand only with a left, a left through and left turn. Typical intersections are left turn with the right hand being through with the right hand turn. So it was, um, changed to follow, uh, typical intersections versus what it was before. Is there arrows to indicate that? The arrow, the previous arrow was ground out, so it probably looks like there still is a remnants of an arrow. The new arrow was painted. Um, the old arrow will be, uh, permanently removed once we chip seal. Okay, anything else? All right. Board of adjustment men entertain motion for the city council recess and sit as a board of adjustment.
Thank you.
Mr. Charks, second by Mr. Gold Hammer. All those in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries. Hearing and action for application for Mark Vin and Hope variance permit. Mark Vin and Hope has applied for a variance permit for accessory building combination of thirty-four hundred and seventy square feet versus two thousand square feet to build a new accessory building of nineteen hundred and twenty square feet. This is located at thirty-two twenty North Main Street, legally described as shown on the agenda. Mr. Genegas.
Mr. Mayor and Council planning commission recommended approval of unanimously. Um, notices were sent out to neighbors, published in paper, signed, posted. There was one letter returned in favor. Um, the applicant would like to build a thirty-two by sixty addition onto an existing shed, which puts him over the two thousand square feet. Um, he'll meet all the setbacks to the north and to the east for this as well. Um, I can answer any question, questions that you may have.
Um, I was just curious, is this in city limits yet?
The rear of his property line is the city limits line.
Say that, so show me where that, where you mean by that. That is in city limits, but none of his property is?
Everything on this side is in city limits.
Oh, okay, got it, got it. I see. Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Move to approve.
Mr. Gold Hammer, second by Mr. Sabers. Further discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to discuss this? All right, all those in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries. Reconvene as city council entertain a motion for the board of adjustment to adjourn in the city council to reconvene in regular session.
So moved.
Mr. Gold Hammer.
Second.
Second by Mr. McCardle. All those in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries. Hearing and action on the application of transfer RL fifty-seven fifty-six retail on, sale liquor license for a more Italian restaurant and bar fifteen twenty-five West Havens to Flatlin Havens LLC fifteen twenty-five West Havens. Chief Ginnipling.
Mayor, city council staff has reviewed this, has no concerns, uh, recommends approval.
Thank you.
Motion approve.
Mr. Sabers?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gold Hammer. Further discussion? Anyone in the audience like to discuss this? All those in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Action to approve and the renewal of the application of the two thousand twenty-six metal, medical cannabis dispensary license for Genesis Farms LLC. Who wants to take this one?
Move to approve.
Okay, Mr. Gold Hammer.
Second.
Second by Mr. McCardle. Further discussion? Anyone, anyone like to discuss this?
Just out of curiosity, are the other dispensaries also, do you have any idea if we have, if they will be planning to renew their?
Yes, they'll be renewing their licenses too. I have sent out their applications. Um, Genesis Farms here, um, their end of the year is October thirty-first. So they needed to have it renewed before the prior ones.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, further discussion? Anyone in the audience like to discuss this? Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign?
Abstain.
One abstention? Motion carries. Action approved. Special event permit application for arts in the park trunk or treat on Friday, October thirty-first, or October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. So, sounds like one of them closed down the middle school one, so the arts in the park is taking it over and doing it at Hitchcock right there.
Move to approve.
Mr. McCardle?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gold Hammer.
I don't think we're on the air. It doesn't sound like on Mitchell Telecom, so most people know that.
Okay.
Do you want to tell us anything about it?
Yeah, so there's twenty vendors. I think the police department's gonna be there, the, the fire station's gonna be there. There's a whole, she gave me a whole list. I forgot most of them. But there's like twenty people, local businesses, a lot of other people, so it's free to the kids, come out and get some candy.
And is it a, it's trunk or treat, so does that mean that the public can come and park their cars and hand out candy or?
If they want, reach out to either me or Nancy at Arts in the Park and then you can park your car there and sign up ahead of time, but you won't be able to drive through the park, so we'll close that road down.
I just wondered if that was one of the, a part of it. Thanks.
Yep. Okay. Anyone in the audience like to discuss this? Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Action award bid of three-year cash rent lease on landfill, park hayland and wastewater lagoons for year two thousand twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, project two thousand twenty-six dash zero five, Mr. Schrader.
Yep, Mr. Mayor Council. Uh, bids were opened on October fourteenth at one thirty PM in city hall council chambers. Uh, bids were received by three bidders. Um, bid form, your information. Uh, the high bidder for these was Brad Barcher. Um, those amounts are shown below. They're all, they're all higher than, uh, three years ago, which is good. Um, city staff does recommend city council awarding the bid to Brad Barcher and I can ask any detailed questions you may have about the bid.
Motion approve.
Second. Mr. Sabers, second by Mr. McCardle. Further discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to discuss this? All right, all those in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Action approved request for streetlights at the Ridgeview on Foster Development, Mr. Schrader.
Yep, Mr. Mayor Council, the city of Mitchell has received a request for five streetlights within the Ridgeview on Foster Development by the developer. Northwestern Energy recommends one streetlight per city block installed at intersections whenever possible. Um, streetlights are installed free of charge to the city of Mitchell if a wood pole is installed and a wood pole is being requested. Um, if, the fee is currently eighteen dollars and forty-seven cents, that's incorrect, and the staff report is fifteen ninety-nine. Um, and that's per month charge. Uh, city staff does recommend approval of the streetlight request and I can answer any questions you may have.
Move to approve.
Mr. Gold Hammer?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bathke. Further discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to discuss this? All those in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Action approved amendment number one with SPN and Associates for state revolving fund, water main projects A twenty twenty-four dash zero two, Mr. Schrader.
Yep, Mr. Mayor Council. Uh, council approved in agreement with SPN and Associates on January first, twenty-four for the construction phase services for three, uh, separate utility projects. Those projects are the highway thirty-seven utility improvements, twelfth and thirteenth water main loop and West Harmon water main loop. Um, since then, the twelfth and thirteenth water main loop and the West Harmon water main loop have been completed. Highway thirty-seven, uh, is wrapping up. This has a, a net zero increase, uh, to their overall contract. It's just shifting of funds. Um, adding additional dollars in the highway thirty-seven. Uh, it's taken longer than anticipated. Um, so the amendment number one, uh, detailed breakout is in the staff report. Again, a net zero increase and staff does recommend approval of amendment number one. I can answer any questions you may have.
Move to approve.
Mr. Mr. Charks?
Sir.
Second by Mr. Smith. Further discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to discuss this? Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Action approved agreement A twenty twenty-five dash fifty-nine, an agreement between the city of Mitchell and the Mitchell, city employees, ASME, local two nine two two, Ms. Owen.
Mayor and council included in the packet is a third of three union contracts. Did the other two at the last, um, city council meeting. All the changes that are included in the contract were discussed with the city council during the course of negotiations. The proposed agreement is a three-year agreement with wages included. In two thousand twenty-six, the wages will be increased by three percent, which is a cost impact of a hundred and fifty-seven thousand five hundred and ninety-nine dollars for ASME eligible positions. In twenty twenty-seven and in twenty twenty-eight, wages will be increased by the CPI with a minimum of two and a maximum of four percent. The agreement also requires comp time to be paid down each year, which limits the city's future liabilities on the payout of comp time. It allows employees to use more paid sick leave towards family sick leave and requires CDL positions to obtain, obtain their CDL within six months of hire versus twelve months of hire. And I recommend approval of agreement A twenty twenty-five dash fifty-nine.
Thank you.
Great job.
Move to approve.
Second.
Mr. Gold Hammer, second by Mrs. Charks. Further discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to discuss this? All those in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Action approved agreement A twenty twenty-five dash sixty-two, Lake Mitchell, fifty percent probable maximum flood assessment and breach analysis agreement with Houston Engineering, Mr. Schrader.
Yep, Mr. Mayor Council. Houston Engineering was requested to provide a scope of work completing a fifty percent probable maximum flood assessment, breach analysis and updating the city's emergency preparedness plan or EPP, uh, for Lake Mitchell. Um, this is a requirement of the Department of Agriculture and Natural Resources in order for us to, um, put a hole in the spillway for the Lake Mitchell project. Um, the scope of work is included in the staff report. That includes project management, um, reviewing and developing hydrology, uh, for the lake and spillway, spillway capacity evaluation, dam routing, breach analysis and mapping, uh, emergency preparedness plan updates. And then the last task is an incremental damage analysis, which is only required if the fifty percent probable maximum flood analysis determines it is required. Um, staff is recommending city council approval of Houston engineering scope of work and the amount of ninety-eight thousand four hundred and thirteen dollars. Um, I can't answer any questions you have. We also have Mike Sotac, uh, online, uh, representing Houston engineering if you have any, uh, detailed questions for him.
Yeah, I'm kind of curious about how they conduct the study. Is there any way that he could give us a kind of a description of how this is done?
Yes, I could go, I could go high level and then Mike could fill in any gaps as needed. The way I understand this is, um, you look at it as a sunny day, as if the lake is, is calm and clear and the dam fails and the lake, uh, water was to lead the lake, uh, what that flooding inundation looks like. Um, the other portion of that is now we have a rain event. It's raining. And that's the fifty percent probable maximum flood, um, with that rain coming down, what does that look like? Um, as it's coming through, uh, the spillway and the earth embankment. Um, how high it is up on the earth embankment? Does it over top the earth embankment? Um, and then from there, um, that's how they determine, uh, our next steps forward with the D A N R as far as, you know, are we good to go? Do we need a, are we able to get a, um, a variance? Uh, or is there different improvements we need to do, um, to meet those requirements? Mike, you have anything to add to that?
We can't hear you, Mike.
While we work on that technical difficulty, Joe is, uh, would it be a true statement that either way, even without the lake project, there's a chance that we're still required to do these studies?
Uh, yeah, so currently, um, North Dakota, North Dakota and Nebraska are requiring these. Um, the state of South Dakota is currently working on, um, including these requirements into state law. Um, actively working on that process. Um, once that state law is, um, passed, then they would start working on, uh, the governing bodies of those dams, uh, to perform these analysis for high hazard dams, which we currently are.
How many others are there in the state, do you know? Cause that's, it doesn't seem like there'd be very many, but maybe there are.
I mean, there's a website you can go to where it shows you where all the high hazard dams are located along with some other dams. Um, there are a lot less high hazard dam dots on the map than there are, um, others.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I got a quick question. I remember last time when they were FIRA, they weren't, we found out they weren't licensed in South Dakota. Are they a licensed engineer in South Dakota now or not?
Uh, I can tell you, uh, Mike Sotac, um, under his, uh,
Remember last time they weren't?
I, I was not here when, when FIRA, uh, was working for the city. Um, but I do believe Mike Sotac is a registered engineer in South Dakota.
Joe, can you, maybe you can't tell us, like, if this goes through and everything's all honky-dory, what kind of timeline would we be looking at the neck, what would the next step be in the timeline for?
Uh, so, uh, if this happens, um, as fast as, they think it could be completed in two months. If there, if we find out that we are, um, good to go, I believe that would be a, a council decision on how soon you would want to move forward with the project, um, whether we continue, move forward drawing, drawing down the lake as soon as possible, or wait until, uh, the lake season is over or some hybrid of that, which once we get the results, we'll start working immediately to, uh, update that plan and timeline.
Did they indicate when they could start possibly? That, that, can they work in the winter months or not?
As far as?
The study.
Oh, yes. Yep, they're gonna get started, uh, hopefully tomorrow. Nothing's on site. I don't think anything's on site, is it, for the study? The majority, the vast majority of this is all, um, desktop work. Okay, any other questions?
Mike, we've been at this a long time. Another, another step.
Is he unmuted yet?
It's not us. He's unmuted by us. It's not one of his and that's why.
Oh, okay. Well, has anyone got any questions for the guy?
Move to approve.
Yeah.
Second.
Okay, got a motion in a second. Further discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to discuss this? All right, all those in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carries. Action approved agreement A twenty twenty-five dash sixty-three, South Dakota DOT section five three one one and title, I I I B grant funds, Ms. Pickett?
Mayor Council, Justin Pickett, Community Services Coordinator. I'm here to talk about our annual DOT grant request and what was the I'm here to talk about our annual D O T grant request and what was approved. This is our annual operating for administrative and operating for the Dallas transit. We were approved seven hundred and thirty thousand, forty one dollars seventy two cents. It is just shy around four thousand of our current year's operating budget. But with the changes that we've made, we crunched the numbers and we think we should have no problem staying within that budget.
Okay, thank you.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion by Mr. Goldhammer, second by Mr. Bethke. Further discussion? Anyone in the audience like to discuss this? Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries action to approve agreement A twenty twenty five dash sixty four peaceful pines assignment agreement, Mr. Johnson.
All right, so this would relate to the uh peaceful pines TIF that was approved um in the last couple of months here. Uh, really, all this agreement is doing is saying that once the city receives the increment. Instead of paying that out to the developer, um we'll pay that to the bank instead and. That's a request from the developer uh to facilitate their financing for the project, so. Uh, I guess with that, we can open it up for any questions.
Okay.
Motion approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Sabre's, second by Mr. Goldhammer. Further discussion? Anyone in the audience like to discuss this? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries action to approve resolution R twenty twenty five dash seventy two plot of lots seven A and nine A and track D well low golf club edition, Mr. Genegas.
Mr. Mayor Council, planning commission recommended approval of this unanimously. Um, Kittles own lot seven, D W owns lot eight, Riders own lot nine. Um, D W is going to sell a portion of lot eight to Kittles and a portion to Riders um on lot nine. Um, so they are vacating all three lots and replating into seven A and uh nine A. Um, it meets zoning requirements. I can answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Goldhammer, second by Mr. Barrington. Further discussion? What do you want the audience like to discuss this? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries action to approve resolution R twenty twenty five dash seventy three creating tax increment district number forty four and approving project plan, Mr. Johnson.
All right. Uh, so this application relates to uh the proposed uh Chef Louis's development um in the bypass area. Um, the project is anticipated to create new restaurant, bar lounge area uh with. Up to fifteen full time employees and twenty five part time employees. That includes construction of a new thirteen thousand square foot building. Um, and other improvements uh to the site. Uh, staff did uh complete a review of the project plan submitted by the developer um and. After making some suggested changes, it does appear to meet all the state and local requirements that we have for TIFs. Um, I'll walk you through a little bit more of the project plan. On page. Let's see here. Uh, page seven, you can see the legal description. It includes uh three lots. Uh, one of those would be the primary site. Two of those are included um in anticipation of future development on those sites. Uh, however, none of the increment would be going to developments on those other sites. Um. It does also include the portion of Commerce Street that runs adjacent to those lots. You can see a map of the proposed district on the next page uh with the yellow highlighted area representing the exterior boundaries and you can kind of see the lot layouts. Um, I believe the Chef's Lu- Chef Louis's development itself would be on that southern lot two B one. Going through the base valuation, you can see the formula that was used to calculate that. Um, at the time of the last uh valuation from the county. Uh, the lots were not split up, so this is based off of the best guess of the developer while working with the. Uh, with work, working with the county on trying to come up with that valuation. Um, you can also see next page after that, the total of our TIFs here. Um, keeping in mind that that total valuation has to be under ten percent for the amounts that are. Included in TIFs currently around that one point five percent. Um, so. Well, under that limit. Um, table on the following page will show you the amount of increment that there being uh that they are requesting for the project at that two million nine twenty one, three twenty six. And then uh we have our developers' agreement terms. Uh, many of those are standard to what you've seen on past TIFs. Um, it again, this would be for the twenty year term, up to the twenty year term. There's no interest rate associated with the TIF itself. Um, and then we do also have requirements that they uh developer waive that discretionary formula for uh property taxes. And that if it's not classified as economic development, then this uh TIF would cease. We did receive the letter from. Uh, the state uh with their preliminary classification uh stating that it would appear to be economic development, so. Things should be on course there. We have the terms relating to the constitutional debt. Um, and again, the terms with the developer, um most of those are bookkeeping, requiring them to. Um, certify costs to us and submit reports. We do um also reserve that potential fee of up to five thousand per calendar year that the city has not charged to date on any TIFs. Um, let's move down to the. Uh, project cost breakdown. You can see total project costs, um nine million, two hundred and seventy one thousand, nine hundred and seventy are estimated. Of which um approximately five point four, five point five would be considered project eligible. Um, or TIF eligible expenses. However, that number is gonna end up being capped at the amount of increment. That uh is expected to be generated, which is that two million, nine twenty one, three twenty six. So they have more costs that qualify, but they can only generate so much increment. Um, following pages, you can see additional breakdowns um on their S uh project cost estimates, more detail on. As aspects of the project. Um, you can see how their value uh coming up with their increment valuation with the property tax levy and then their. Uh, table on how that increment would generate. And you can see um in years, construction years twenty twenty eight and twenty twenty nine. They're showing the development on those other two lots. Again. No increment would be going to support developments on those lots, but the development. On those lots would help support this TIF and the the project costs that are approved. Um, that I should have probably have hit on this earlier, but the lot on the west side of Commerce Street. Is currently in county TIF two, so um. Even though the increment table here shows that um a portion of that increment would be generating in. That construction year twenty twenty, I forget which one of these is the lot, either twenty twenty eight or twenty twenty nine. That increment can actually go towards this TIF until county two TIF uh county TIF two has been paid off.
Um, which is in twenty thirty.
Um, I believe they said in here that it's projected to pay off in twenty twenty eight.
Okay.
Um. Twenty, yeah, so somewhere in that timeframe regardless. It can't go towards this TIF until that one is paid off. Um, and if their estimate is wrong on when that would pay off, it just means they might not get the full increment that they projected. Um, available to them. Um, moving through the other schedules, um we do include the, or they do include the fiscal impact statement. Um, and the economic feasibility study, again, uh citing some details about the project. Um, also the economic development study. And then further down, we get back into. The maps, um attachment two, again, showing the boundary and current site conditions. Um, attachment three shows the map of the improvements on the property, so just, you know, the projected layout of the building itself. Let me get a picture of the proposed exterior and then finally the zoning map. Um, again, one thing to note on this one, the west side of the building. Um, may require a future rezone on that. Once they get to um. You know, actually developing that lot. It doesn't require anything at this time. That's something that the developer would need to consider um in the future. And I think with that, we can open it up for questions. I believe uh we have representatives of the developer here, um if they have anything to add.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, Don Peterson, the attorney for the developer. Um, I really, Justin did a great job of explaining the project. You don't need me to regurgitate that. Uh, I I I'm up here to answer any questions. I I would like to point out that the Fredrickson family, which was the longtime owner of the previous Chef Louis's, is a part of this project. Uh, Karen Fredrickson is here, excuse me, is here tonight to uh also answer any questions. Karen will be part of the management group, uh and 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 so um so they're they're the the family is uh involved in the project. Um, as as Justin uh alluded, the uh, there's two other lots out there capable of development, uh the the developers have been in contact with with uh. Some some possible developers, but it's anticipated that the uh the part, the lot that is currently in county TIF two. Uh, won't be developed before twenty twenty eight or twenty twenty nine and and I I talked to the uh. The bank that is holding the note on county TIF two and that is scheduled to be paid off under the current uh under the current revenue that's coming in and and uh December of twenty twenty eight, so. Any questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I I I'll entertain a motion. I don't have one yet, so.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Goldhammer.
Aye.
Second by three people. Who wants to go first? I will give to Marty. Okay, further discussion before we open it up to the audience? What do you want the audience like to discuss this?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Steve Simpson. Now, I want to be clear. I I think this is a great project. In fact, I think it's so great, it probably could work without the TIF and and uh. I would go along with the TIF. It was more transparent, provide more information. I did uh address this issue with the planning commission last week. And I will start with the project plan, page three. It states the project described in this project plan will not proceed and is not economically feasible but for the use of tax increment financing. Then we go to page twenty six. Under the uh schedule four. Again, it states, however, the real estate to be used for the project and the improvements to the real estate. Will not be made but for the TIF being approved. And my comments on on the but for uh in in this project plan is that it is an opinion not backed up with financial data. If the developer hasn't produced performance statements of operating revenue versus operating costs in order to perform a rate of return analysis. Then that 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 needs to happen and this committee needs or this uh. Council needs access to those numbers in order to determine if the but for opinion is valid or not. This would be required in order to for due diligence to be served. And on page twenty six. Uh, there's a feasibility study that provides the project's cost can't be financed through tax increment financing. Under South Dakota tax increment district law. With the balance of the cost to be paid by a de- uh developer. My point is with the ba- but for statement. It cannot be just can be financed. The question is, should it be financed? In other words, is the but for statement true or false? Um, on page twenty five, it actually says that uh it is not intended to rival the level of detail required by detailed financial analysis. So the plan on page twenty five actually admits that we don't have enough detailed financial analysis to make a proper decision uh on whether it should be approved or not. Uh, the the response from the uh. Uh, planning commission was that we've already passed TIFs and we're gonna basically pass this one too. Uh, if you look at Commerce Street, there's been. Three TIFs approved for Commerce Street. The first was seven, said TIF seven, that was in two thousand and five. And according to phase one of that project plan. Commerce Street was supposed to be completed from Eighth Street to Twenty Third Street. As of today, it's only at Fifteenth Street. And then in twenty thirteen, the county passed uh uh TIF number two. And almost covered the exact same area that uh TIF seven covered, almost duplicate. And as uh that was overlapping, so seven, so seven had to be taken care of before county TIF two can. Start collecting money due to the overlap and that happened in twenty twenty three. So county TIF number two just started collecting TIF in twenty twenty three. Then in uh twenty twenty three also, uh the city passed TIF number thirty one for Fifteenth Street going west. That was also supposed to be completed by county TIF number two. So for some reason, these things aren't getting done within the original TIF, so we do another TIF and then we have overlapping TIFs. And uh, uh, after checking into that, I I found out that they needed TIF thirty one. Uh, for eco electric supply. It is owned by Q R S Investments out of Omaha. Uh, they current, uh, they also got a uh. Three hundred and fifty thousand plus grant from the governor's office of economic development for that business. Plus the Mitchell Area Development Corporation provided a million dollar loan. Now, the same Q R S ha- has a uh. It's called a renewal plan with the city of Carroll, Iowa. And that renewal plan provides all kinds of economic development tools, including TIFs. So that kind of points me into the argument that. Did this company really need that TIF thirty one or not? And that leads me to the question of whether this TIF need, uh, this project needs a stiff or not. Uh. In addition, in TIF seven and county TIF two, uh, there was uh some development plots that were recently sold for multi millions of dollars. One involved the Brooklyn, South Dakota corporation. And another involved a North Dakota corporation. So again, as the state of South Dakota as a whole benefiting from these tests that end up providing uh. Out of state businesses with with uh that financial benefit. And that's required by state law, you know, South Dakota. In order to have an economic development TIF, it has to provide for the general economic welfare of the state of South Dakota. Uh, I have concerns that's not happening. That's why I'm pushing for the idea that we need to have. More transparencies in the project plan regarding uh for financial uh return investment. And. Uh, we'll stand by for any questions. Thank you.
Steve, I got one question. Steve, can I answer you one question? So we were talking about this. And and everything you're saying is fine, but I just have one question for you. So you say you need to see a rate of return to see if it's a fi- a good financial investment, right? What's that number? Cause for you, ten percent might be okay, but someone might not invest at ten because it's a risky business. Does that make sense? So for me, it's like, are we to judge? People to make one investment?
When we get to developer agreement for these districts, we're creating a public private partnership. In other words, we, the public, are going into a partnership with a private company. And we should be uh know as much as the private company does about the risk. The the estimated rate of return and whether or not the TIF will make a difference or not. So somehow we need to be involved in that discussion. The public has to somehow. That's the point I'm making.
Got it.
And 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 you're very valid point. Uh, where where I work, we we did payback calculations for return investment. So if the cash flow pays the investment back in two years, it's a done deal. Corporation will. At headquarters will approve it. If it's three years, it depends. If it's over three years, no way. That's how we worked it.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Good question. Thank you.
Yep, anyone else in the audience like to discuss this? Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
and storm sewer facilities along North Omen Street from Twenty-third Avenue to Kemper Avenue. The funds could be either a grant from the state Consolidated Water Facilities Construction Program or a loan from the Clean Water State Revolving Fund Program. The city is seeking up to $3.93 million from the CWSRF program. The expected SRF loan terms are four percent for thirty years. The Board of Water and Natural Resources may forgive all or a portion of the loan principal for the loan. The amount, source of funds, and terms will be determined by the Board of Water and Natural Resources when the application is presented at a scheduled board meeting. And with that, I will open the public hearing.
Okay.
Anyone from the public, you can come up at this time and speak.
What do you know, the public like to speak on this?
Good evening. My name is John Gard, and I have just a couple of questions that I like to ask. And my way or reasoning behind this is, I have friends who basically are truck drivers. What you're looking at proposing is you're looking at proposing a roundabout on an area that I travel on a regular basis, probably, I don't know, six times a day, I'm going through that intersection because I live north on Omen Street. So my question is pertaining to the roundabout that you're looking at proposing. And so what I like to do is, it's my understanding that according to a recent traffic study conducted by HDR Engineering, approximately 2,200 vehicles travel through that intersection daily, which brings up a couple of questions. Of those vehicles, how many of those vehicles are large trucks or semi-tractor trailer trucks traveling through the intersection servicing industries in the community? Do you have any answers as far as the results of the survey pertaining to large tractor-trailer trucks?
Mr. Trader, if you got any of those? I'm guessing not. I'm guessing it's the little ones that, you know, the little things they drive over. I don't think they track what vehicles. Maybe they do, though.
The size, no. But I can answer that during the design process, the roundabout will be able to carry tractor-trailers, also doubles pulling through the intersection. So all that has been preliminary looked at and determined to be able to go through the roundabout.
Okay. And I want to say thank you for taking that into consideration because I have, as I said, good friends who are truck drivers. My son has a commercial driver's license. I was visiting with a good friend of mine this evening who's driving tractor-trailer truck hauling grain. And he was saying, you know, when it comes to roundabouts, they need to be large enough to accommodate those large trucks. Taking into consideration large trucks to include tractor-trailer trucks, that type of thing, have you solicited feedback from the two industries or from truck drivers regarding navigating through those roundabouts? Those industries would be Twin City Fan, the other one would be CH Farmers Alliance, which hauls grain. Did you ever get any feedback from them at all?
We have not yet, but we have, we do have plans to meet with everyone involved with the project.
Awesome. And again, that, that's good to know. I want to say thank you for sharing that with me. And then it's my understanding that there are currently three options for consideration. One is the cost for a four-way stop sign, which should be about $515,000, according to Jeff McCormick, who is the associate and project engineer with Schumacher, Paul, and NOR Associates. Per the Mitchell Republic on September fifteenth, this was recently changed according to an article in the September seventeenth Mitchell Republic to $165,800. So there is a difference in what the original estimate is and what the current estimate is for the four-way stop sign. According again to Jeff McCormick with SPN, "An intersection with traffic signals is estimated to cost $865,000," again in the September fifteenth edition of the Mitchell Republic. "No mention of this cost was mentioned or identified in the city of Mitchell by the city of Mitchell in the September seventeenth issue of the Mitchell Republic." So at this point, the only information we've got is $865,000 for the cost of traffic signals. And then last but not least, the roundabout is estimated to cost originally $910,000, again according to Jeff McCormick with SPN, also reported in September fifteenth issue of the Mitchell Republic. Should be noted that the September seventeenth issue of the Mitchell Republic, the cost of estimate was now $449,500. And there's an additional cost of $265,500 for sidewalks for a total project cost of $715,000. So why is there a significant difference between the cost estimate from the city of Mitchell versus from Jeff McCormick, associate and project engineer with SPN?
So I think I could answer some of that. The article that you're referring to was talking about the increased cost to the 2026 proposed budget. So if you want to look up on the screen here, this is what council reviewed after the presentation by SPN. So we already had some of these costs factored into the 2026 budget, but in order to do a sidewalk with, or I mean, do a roundabout with the sidewalk included at the city's cost, it was 715. That's just an increased cost to the budget. So those numbers you'll see, the 165,800, 265, those were all talking about the different options council was considering and how much would have to be added to the budget. At this point, the council directed us to go with, I think, item G, right? Where we're assessing the sidewalk, the city's paying the difference between the sidewalk and the bike path. So we added $615,395 to the budget.
Okay. And I want to say thank you. That is good to know. I appreciate that. Down to my last question.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. And so last question is, it's my understanding that the city of Mitchell in the past has always maintained a policy which is going with the lowest bid for a project to save taxpayers' money. Finally, using the city of Mitchell estimates, what is the justification for moving forward with the roundabout costing an anticipated $715,000 versus a four-way stop sign estimated to cost $165,800? That's it?
The reason for that was the best route forward with future traffic demands is the roundabout. And for the, when the intersection would be completed again, the probability that a roundabout would ever be installed is, is slim to none. So it meets the projected demand of vehicle traffic in the area in order to proceed with the roundabout now.
So to answer your question, it wasn't really a bid. It was different projects. Once we get the project, we'll still take the lowest bid. It's just we were deciding on the project. Once that is, then it goes for bid, then we choose the lowest bidder.
Okay.
And that was really just so we knew what to put in the budget request for 2026. We needed direction from council, and the direction we got was to proceed with the roundabout. They're going to look at bids and do the award of the project at that.
Okay. Joe, Stephanie, and the rest of you, I'd like to thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
All right.
Mayor and Council, Jacob Sonny with SPN. Just wanted to clear one thing up regarding the cost estimates. I know there is quite a bit of buzz on social media regarding the cost of installing two stop signs, and I think the mayor made the joke of, well, this guy gets $260,000 and I'll take the other $260,000 or whatever it is. But when we were comparing those, we were trying to compare apples to apples as far as footprint of the total area. So with the roundabout, the circle itself is proposed as about 150 feet in diameter. And then to make the transitions back to the streets on all four sides, we'd have to go back about 200 feet. So the footprint of the roundabout and the associated improvements is quite wide. So with the stop sign option, we weren't looking at just putting in two stop signs. We were looking at what are the street replacement and utility replacement costs for a regular intersection, but expanding that out to the extents that we'd also have to replace the roundabout. So if you look at that image there, that's carrying out those improvements outside of that intersection. So it's really about 1,200 feet of road improvement. So it's not $500,000 for two stop signs. It's $500,000 to put an intersection in. With that being said, those costs are justified as there was the master traffic study that was completed a couple of years ago that identified that both corridors on Twenty-third and on Omen should go to a three-lane section with a center turn lane. And so regardless, those improvements need to happen whether we put a roundabout here or not. So by doing that roundabout, we're already set up to future improvements going east on, well, east, west, and south throughout that corridor. Thank you.
Can you just stay there for one second? Can we go back to the footprint that we have? This is another big, a common misconception about this. One of the concerns that I keep hearing from people in our neighborhood and in this area that use this intersection, because that lift station was put in and that intersection was closed for a long time, is this makes it look like that lift station. I know that we've talked about it before, but as long as you're here, I would like you to clarify it one more time, make sure that everybody is aware that, of what will actually happen where that lift station is.
Correct. So this image is skewed a little bit just based on how that line work is pulled into that image. The, the lift station is outside of the improvements. So the sidewalk for the roundabout will not be going through the lift station. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment regarding this project?
I'm just curious too, I mean, watching, you're trying to allocate money to the various organizations and stuff like that, and it's a tough decision you guys have to make. It's two or three cars a minute. It should be a four-way stop because it's a dangerous intersection now, but you could save several hundred thousand dollars that you could apply to some of those organizations that you couldn't fund and then take care of other things. I'm just saying, I know, to me, it's a quote, nice, unquote, thing to do, to put the roundabout in. Got nothing against them, went through them a lot of times, but it's just straight four-way stop. Buy some time, see if, you know, use that money elsewhere or maybe save it, you know, if taxpayers are like that. I mean, I don't, I mean, I don't disagree that, while this would be cool, but I just find myself thinking, put two stop signs in, make it a four-way stop, and in three, four years from now, that 2,300 becomes 4,500 or something that's really being a problem? I mean, I, I go through every day. I'm golfing all the time, so I know how many cars go through there. And I've watched too, since this media, or since that came out in the paper, and thinking, again, three, four cars, you know, 50 cars, 100 cars in an hour? Is that really where you need to spend your money, considering the budget issues you guys already have? Just my thought.
Thank you.
Jacob Sonny, SPN. Yes, currently the traffic count probably would be three or four vehicles a minute or just a handful. The study reviewed the 2050 condition of what anticipated traffic would be through the roundabout at that time. It makes sense to make these improvements now, like Joe had alluded to, that we need to replace that water and sewer infrastructure under the street regardless. It makes sense to put the roadway in a way that it will provide a good level of service as we continue into the future, since we have to do those, those improvements regardless.
Can you just discuss like where that traffic is going to come from? I know we've heard this again. I just want to make sure that everyone is hearing it, that, well, maybe listening tonight that didn't listen at previous meetings, but tell about some of the considerations that were taken into account when planning this.
Yeah, absolutely. I don't have the, the map in front of me, but within the report, the HDR showed multiple locations of potential development, one of those being the recent South Lake Estates that just had the ribbon cutting here the last month. You know, that's a Phase One project with, I think, 30 or 40 lots on it. There's about three or four more of those that could happen in that area. I want to say there's around 150 units that could happen in that loop. And then additionally, there's property on the west side of Omen that could also develop. So within that study, they reviewed potentially increased traffic due to those developments and took that into account.
I would like to clarify one thing. So when they're talking about the increased cost, it's not, it's just that we're paying the cost earlier than we normally would. Eventually, you're going to have those costs to replace the road in the extended areas. We're still going to have to replace the infrastructure. We're just doing it now instead of a couple of years down the road.
Right.
We would otherwise do it.
And, and just to add to that, that we, as a council, decided that those sidewalks from, on Omen, from Twenty-third to Kemper, that was a project. And so that's really the thing that kind of was the impetus for all of this. Like when we decided that we were going to do the sidewalks, then all of these other pieces that need to be done in the course of events over the next several years, this is the time to do them when we're already doing these other projects.
Right. Absolutely. There is efficiency in lumping those projects together. The water, I believe, is currently cast iron pipe. The sewer is all clay pipe, outdated, needs to be updated with PVC. So it's definitely efficient to do all those improvements at the same time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else from the public?
Should have watched this on TV. It's not what I'm here for, but I live out there. And can I ask, what is the problem with that intersection right now? What's the problem? What are we, what are we trying to solve? What, what's the issue that we're trying to solve here? I get it that we're going to do infrastructure underneath Omen Street, but is there a problem with traffic flow? Is there a problem with something else?
Currently, one of my biggest problems with that intersection is that there's no sidewalk for pedestrians.
Totally agree.
And so in, in putting in sidewalk, we have to do the other improvements to get curb and gutter there.
Right. But I'm going to die someday, but I'm not going to go buy a burial vault for me today because I need it, no, I'm going to need it in the future. And that's a lot of money. And we don't know what the needs are going to be in five years, but we're saying we're going to spend the money because we think it's going to happen. We built the high school because we think we're going to need a bunch of kids and we got a lower enrollment now than we did when we built it. So my thought is, is really you only need two stop signs. Your traffic flow is on Omen Street. A lot of residential people live on the north side of it. I live over there, and there's a lot of cars that are trying to get through to go one direction, to high school and to work. Take the two stop signs that are there and put them on Twenty-third Street, build a turning lane going westbound on Twenty-third Street, because all the people that are going west are turning to go to the residential area. There's a train on the tracks half the time. People avoid that intersection anyway. Nobody's going west. If they do, it's very rarely. And then you make Omen your through street, and then the people that need to go, I mean, there's nobody going anywhere else. I mean, if you just have the stop signs on Twenty-third East and West, that would protect the intersection. I totally agree with the infrastructure. Make your, make your road so it's wider, bigger. And I, I work with roundabouts all over the place. I go to North Dakota and the Bakken all the time, Dickinson, Williston. They have a lot of snow. You put in a preemptive roundabout, plows are going to nail it. You're going to have to replace all the gutters in the, within years. And it's kind of like when we got the money from, for the airport. It just means you're going to have to replace it three years earlier. If we're not ready for it, that would be my thought, but that's your guys' decision to make. That's a lot of money that could be used for something else.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to make any public comment on this project? Mr. Sonny, you got something else you would like to add or just answering questions?
Just waiting.
All right. Okay. Last chance.
I guess just to address some of those questions from the previous presenters we've had here. Level of service, service there is currently B. Worst-case scenarios, right now it's a C. 2050, no build, level of service F. If we look out into 2050 projections, always stop control puts us at a level of service C. Roundabout puts us at a level of service A. So when council made that decision, we talked that the roundabout would be concrete surfacing, which would limit our maintenance costs for the service life of the project typically. When you look at the service life of asphalt versus concrete, your overall cost for the life of the project for concrete is typically less than asphalt. However, asphalt has an upfront cheaper cost, which is why people typically go with asphalt because we're worried about dollars now versus the life of the project. So just, just another reminder of why council made the decision they did. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment?
If we look out at to twenty-fifty projections, uh always stop control uh puts us at a level of service C. Um roundabout puts us at a level of service A. Someone counsel made that decision. Um we talked that the roundabout uh would be concrete surfacing, which would limit our. Um maintenance costs for the service life of the project typically. When you look at the service life of asphalt versus concrete, uh your overall cost for the life of the project for concrete is typically less than asphalt. However, asphalt has an upfront cheaper cost, which is why people typically go with asphalt because we're worried about dollars now versus. Um the life of the project. So just just another reminder of why counsel made the decision they did. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Are we doing a vote on this or is this just a hearing?
Well, once public input is done, you can move on to the next item on the agenda.
Okay, right. Hearing and first reading on ordinance oh twenty-two-five dash twelve rezoning uh as shown on the agenda. Mister Genegas.
Mister Mayor Council, Planning Commission recommended approval of this unanimously. Notices were sent out to the neighbors, published in the paper, signs posted. There were four letters returned in favor of this. Um the reason for the rezone is applicant would like to replat their three existing lots. That they have out there right now. Um two of them being urban development, the north one being in the PUD. Um you can't plat a lot with two different zonings on it, so he is requesting to rezone from the PUD to the urban development, which is what his house sits on. He meets all the setbacks in the zoning for urban development with that new parcel as well coming into urban development. Can answer any questions that you have for me with this.
Motion Mr. McCordell. Second, Mr. Bathke. Further discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to discuss this? Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye? Pose same sign. Motion carries. Hearing and first reading on ordinance oh twenty-two-five dash thirteen, amending CJM. Second edition planned unit development. Mister Genegas.
Mister Mayor Council, Planning Commission recommended approval of this unanimously. Notices were sent out to neighbors, uh signs posted. Uh published in the paper. Um there were three letters returned in favor of this. Because of the previous item on the agenda that you recommended for first or approve for first reading. That changes the PUD legal description in it. We have to take out that lot from the legal description within the PUD. So the first one triggers the second one. It's not changing anything else besides the legal description. Can answer any questions yet?
Mr. Goldhammer. Second, Mr. Smith. Further discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to discuss this? All those in favor of the motion say aye? Pose same sign. Motion carries. First reading on ordinance oh twenty-two-five dash fourteen fireworks for New Year's. Mister Johnson.
All right. Well, I don't know if you want me to speak on this one or if you want Councilman Barrington to, but. So this ordinance, um very simple. Um it's intended to open up. A window to allow fireworks just like we do for Fourth of July, um and open that window up around the New Year's Eve holiday. Uh the dates that were suggested for that were the December thirtieth, December thirty-first and January first uh dates. So. Basically, it's the same thing that we're doing for July fourth right now, except now you're allowing it on these other dates too.
And I'll chime in there with Justin. Um um part of it, obviously, most people relate fireworks for the Fourth of July. And I think most of us know how fireworks have become part of other traditions from obviously events, weddings, birthdays. Um just celebratory events, you know, throughout the community and and other ones, but. Um every year, there are firework stands that do open up during the New Year's holiday celebration. Uh maybe not all of them, but there is a few in particular around town that do open up for a few days, um because the state ordinance does allow that. So um at that time, it just been in actually in my discussion for the last few years, I've been thinking about it, but. It just came to the point that uh they actually are selling more and more every year because New Year's celebration is becoming a bigger event. So. I'm just asking to put this on the docket and uh approval for it to be something that our citizens can celebrate that holiday with it. Um so just another avenue of fireworks. So as all of us know, I love fireworks, no doubt about it, but. Um uh it's just more of a community event and I think it's worth the. Effort to give it a try and see what uh it does change. I don't expect it uh to be anything crazy. Um I think weather will have a big dictate on it. If it's pretty cold outside, it would probably be pretty quiet. But if we get some good weather, which we have had in the past, uh during the New Year's celebration, uh I think it might be a very eventful evening. So. Um in a positive way. So I am asking for approval, so.
Is there a cutoff time?
According to this, no, I would think.
Yes, there is. It should be eleven fifty-nine or just basically before midnight as the Fourth of July fireworks are.
Don't you wanna say like twelve oh one?
That's what that's what I was really looking for. Eleven fifty-nine, so midnight.
So so it'd be up until eleven fifty-nine PM on January first, so. Oh, so right up until January second.
My fuse lasts over a minute, it'll be lit before then.
I love it. My dog will hate it, but.
Move to place on first reading.
Motion on second? Further discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to discuss this? Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye? Pose same sign. Motion carries. Next is budget work session. Do you want to take a quick break before we start? Five minutes and then we'll re.
On, sorry. I just first wanted to start by pointing out on the agenda we had. I had posted the update as of where we are right now for budget changes after the last work session. Wow, that's crazy. And then as well as the council review list, I also provided the railroad trail map. We did have two updates from the last meeting, so I thought if you guys want, I could just start with those. So the first thing is. Right here, uh, in the budget, we had planned for the railroad trail, and if you remember, we had the grant. Um, set at the same level as what the expenditures were gonna be. We did get a letter of award from the state. And that grant was only seventy-five thousand dollars. So I'm just pointing out to move forward with that project. The city would have to come up with another three hundred and twenty-four thousand, three hundred and eighty-nine dollars. However. Sorry, I took one of your candies. Um, Kevin Nelson did reach out to the state and the way their grant period works. Um, we would actually have until twenty-twenty-seven to expend the grant. So if you wanted to just keep those items in the budget. We could look in March at supplements to see if there's unspent funds from last year. Or they could even use a twenty-twenty-seven budget to budget for the rest of the funds needed to make the project go forward. But I wanted to let you know as is, without any changes, we wouldn't have the ability to do that project in twenty-twenty-six without changes. Um, so that would be this item here, oh. And the second item is, um, we would like to have our, we have, are aware of another project. That we could potentially do, um, a drainage project to help with storm water runoff south of Havens. Um, in order to move forward with that project, the city would have to. Either reduce that debt service payment by another sixty-six thousand dollars or come up with offsetting cuts to equate that. We really think that would improve the storm drainage in that area and would like to see if we can get that included and not miss out on that opportunity.
And then, one more thing, then we, and then also the lake, the study for Lake Mitchell should come down a hundred thousand, or do we already discuss that last?
Um, no, we haven't. So you're right, that could come down by.
Hundred and two thousand.
Didn't even think about it. Hundred and two thousand, cuz originally we had talked about a two-hundred-thousand-dollar, um. Cost of that study, although right now it's all gonna be in the lake fund, so if you had something else that came up after that study. You would have the funds there for that. Uh, but you could reduce that to equate to what the approved contract amount was.
I think the one on, uh, South Havens is a definite, that we should definitely do that.
Yeah, I would agree, but that's like the one of the worst areas we have.
So is that a yes for everybody?
Perfect. That was easy.
Do you want me to reduce that off of the study?
Sure.
To equate the difference?
That sounds good. I think everyone will be okay with that.
I had one other thing I wanna add in there. I talked to a couple of officers and, uh. The printers for ninety-two-hundred dollars. Uh, we got good officers, but we have bad re- ninety-two-hundred. Good officers, but they're bad handwriting. They can't write very well here.
We could do penmanship classes.
So this, uh, these printers. From when I've heard that sometimes when they go to court, they can't read what they're going to court for cuz the penmanship's so bad. And these printers would make everything so everybody could read it while you're going to court. It would help. I think it would help a lot. And it would save a lot of time, too.
Yeah, I, I agree because saving time is saving money. And, and so if you have to backtrack and try to figure out exactly what was, what was on the. Yeah, it certainly makes sense to me, sense to me, and I, I would support that.
Alright, why don't you calculate that and tell us where we're sitting if you can.
Where would that come off of? Do you want me to reduce that also off of the?
I'd like to speak on the golf course next. Um, I was asked to go to the gol- golf board meeting, get the board's approval. Um, found I was a minority, like a huge minority, like I was the only vote. Um, only opinion, no vote. Um, they would like to go forward with the reduced plan. Um, of, of just, just a short course. Um, unanimous, they put a lot of time, effort into it. Actually, you know, they found the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar donation. Uh, they're putting to give to the city, you know, to build, you know, a city project. So I mean, they're, they're putting their effort into it. They, they think they can grow the game. I agree with them. Uh, as far as practice facilities, getting younger people in, getting kids in, um. It's good for the community to grow the game. Everybody, everybody, um, gets the advantage of that. Um, I think it's a great project to do right now. There's no, there's no income shortfall. Because the, the course doesn't get, uh, um, you know, disturbed. Far, far as any income, any tournaments. Um, we, Mitchell is setting themselves apart from everybody else as far as being state tournaments, and you can see that. Um, we got one or two state tournaments, which is good for the whole community every year, two next year, I think. And then one the next three years or four years after that, because they realize what kind of product we have. This only improves the image of our course. Um, it's, uh. The town is moving in the right direction as far as supporting this kinda stuff. They, uh, the income is on an upswing. Um, they have the ability to, all the way back from when Kevin Thurman was running it, you know, they, they bought the driving range. Gave it to the city out of their funds, you know, we're getting back to that. Uh, you know, they built, they built the two bathrooms, the golf course, they'd give them to the city. Um, they were taking their, their, their income, there's numerous other things, too. And, um, so this is something, our income is up and it's been up every year, the last two years. Have, uh, really went up. And they're, they're getting into a, a place to keep, to upgrade, um, to buy their, their better equipment to. To getting more labor to keep it up. Um, there, there's, there's not, it's, it, there's not another better municipal course, in my opinion, in the state. Um, it's, uh, and that's, that's any. That includes your, your, your soup. And, um, I think it's time to, to, uh, to put some money into it and, um. All, everything's positive moving forward.
What's the percentage of what the donations are compared with the cities, do you know?
Um, yes, and I could call somebody up that did the report on it. Uh, what was the question again? Make sure I.
How much? Is it over fifty percent of what? Of what, uh?
Um, exactly sixty-plus percent, Stephanie probably know would, would be raised or, or, uh. Nine-hundred thousand, you're talking three-hundred thousand out of our golf course, two-hundred-and-fifty raise. Um, there was some cut stuff that's not really coming to, to get into there. Um, I could have somebody come up and.
Are you asking for donations or?
What wa- is it over fifty percent of what, of the, of the project costs is being?
Project cost, it costs the city, the, the other.
How much does the city pay for the total? Okay.
Percentage, yeah, is it over fifty percent or under fifty percent?
I should clarify, by city, do you mean general fund or do you mean general fund plus golf course money?
It depends on how you define the city.
Additional.
Additional funds, okay, thank you. Twenty-seven percent.
That's of the one, one point five, if we take it down to.
That is the lower. Am I on the wrong one?
I think you grabbed the wrong.
Oh, yep, you're, no, one point five is the right one.
One million fifty-three.
Hold on. I feel like Andrew has my computer again, but he really doesn't.
False.
Isn't the golfers giving two-hundred-and-fifty or something and donations to two-hundred?
Forty percent.
Golfers take three-hundred thousand, these are two-hundred-and-fifty they have donations for.
That's over half a million.
Right, but just to clarify, the golf fund is the city.
Correct.
Right.
But, I mean, I, I appreciate you asking that question, Kevin, cuz that was my same question. They've, they're putting in money from their own, own sources and they have the donation that will offset what we put in from the general fund. And so, um, that makes a difference to me. We always talk about skin in the game and the only way they can put skin in the game is by using money from their fund, which is city. But it's money that they've earned out there and that they have, um, the donation for.
I only say that to ensure that everybody knows it's still city funds either way.
And I appreciate that, but it, it does like, when you look at this, it's still like, it looks like. A million fifty-three thousand is coming from general fund, but it's not technically speaking. Is there any way to show that?
Well. I mean, that is what, yeah. The transfer from general fund is four-hundred-and-seventeen thousand dollars. There will still be a loan on the books. There, there's still gonna be a loan on the books. Yeah, there's still a loan on the books, um, for the equipment that this, that the golf course purchased this year. They will not have cash in the fund to be able to make that repayment in twenty-twenty-six, so they'll need to accumulate. You know, cash in that fund over time to, and I think it's two-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars for that loan. Does that sound right, Dan? I can't remember.
Two forty-six, I think that's.
Two forty-six.
Something like that.
That will need to be paid back in the future, but I just wanna make sure you're aware of that. Don't anticipate that to be paid off cuz there, this will deplete the golf fund. There'll be nine thousand dollars.
Define the future. Yeah, is there a loan?
There's no, um, there's no timeline on the repayment, on the resolution that city passed. It's just a four percent interest rate. Um, so the longer the loan extends, the more interest is owed on the loan.
Does the interest have to get paid every year or is it just a balloon payment whenever it happens?
I think it's just whenever it happens. And right now, this is how we, sorry, I didn't have my microphone on. Right now, the current budget changes includes the four-hundred-and-seventeen thousand dollars. Going from general fund to the golf fund to move forward with the one million fifty-three thousand dollar project.
Where does that put us in for a total?
Uh, I guess I need to ask, what are you asking about for the total? What do you wanna look at? I mean, we still have, you still have twenty-six thousand, three hundred dollars left in the. Um, that you could reduce the professional services for the lake study due to the contract award tonight. And you have another two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand-nine-twenty-three left in the lake debt service payment. There's two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand-nine-hundred-and-twenty-three dollars left in the lake payment. You can see that right here. And we currently have a hundred-and-twenty-four thousand, eight-hundred budgeted for the, the. Keep forgetting what we're calling it. The study with fire, or Houston Engineering. Yeah, I don't wanna say that, that's what I'm trying to avoid. The study on the Lake Mitchell Dam, um, which we still would have, that's only gonna cost us ninety-eight thousand, five hundred. So you still have some flexibility in that line. Otherwise, if not, I would suggest that you leave the, if you don't have another purpose. I would suggest that you leave those in in case we have to do additional work with that as you get into the Lake Mitchell Dam studies. Otherwise, everything else that you've made to date is on here, um, that we've talked about so far. And then just for the public's information, the first reading on the annual suppo- or the annual appropriation ordinance. Has to be held at the first meeting in November, and then the second reading and adoption is required to be held at the second meeting in November.
So I guess my simple question is, are we balanced?
Yes.
As of right now?
Yes.
And that includes what of the?
Adding the sixty-six thousand dollars for the drainage project south of Havens. Um, it includes adding nine thousand, two hundred dollars back in for the carpenters, for the patrol cars. Um, it's reducing the professional services budget for. Uh, Houston Engineering for the Lake Mitchell Dam studies from two-hundred thousand dollars down to a hundred-and-twenty-four thousand, eight-hundred dollars. And it leaves the golf course project, as was discussed at the last meeting, at one million fifty-three. Right here, one million fifty-three thousand dollars, four-hundred-and-seventeen thousand coming from the general fund. And then, at this point, because I haven't heard differently, the railroad trail project. Would either need to have funding in the supplemental appropriation in twenty-twenty-seven or twenty-twenty-six. Or they would have to budget the additional funds for twenty-twenty-seven.
So we could earmark a portion this year.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm saying. You would have to come up with, uh, three-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand, three-eighty-nine. In order to move forward with that project. So Park and Rec could go through their, um, remaining budget balances at the end of twenty-five. If there was money left over and revenue to support it, they could request to move it to twenty-twenty-six budget. And move forward with it in twenty-six, or they would budget that difference as a project as part of the twenty-seven budget request.
And what, what amount have we reduced the lake payment by?
The lake payment is currently at two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand-nine-hundred-and-twenty-three dollars.
Remaining, so we burned a million of it.
You, you build.
Proposed.
Nine-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand, seventy-seven dollars.
I, I'm in, in favor of keeping the bike path out, out at this point and, um. A few months ago, the mayor brought up the possibility of lighting that bike path. And a lot of people came forth to me and said, they like the current gravel. Because they've got the white tires and, and it's a little over two miles and. So there's people that actually enjoy having that terrain versus having it, uh, actually asphalted. And, and one thing I would like to do is maybe instead of concentrating in that area, maybe. Spruce it up a little bit or do some maintenance to it, or whatever. But on our, uh, watershed, where we talked about having a nature trail. I, I would like just to maybe focus in on, on that to see if there's a possibility of some grants or something. Uh, because, you know, we've got the land and, and now the, the, uh, the ponds are in. And we've always talked about the possibility of putting in some nature trails, so as, as just a thought, just one suggestion. But for now, I'm fine with leaving this one off to the side.
Yeah, just for a trail update, you, you wouldn't happen to have that picture, would you, Joe? Anyway, so I got Joe, Stephanie bringing it up.
I have it.
So we're working on like a future to finish the trails around the lake. And, and this is just a proposed idea of what phases, all the costs. Obviously, none of it's gonna get done or even put in the budget this year, but this is just something we're working on, based on like. The fastest way to adjoin our current trails so you can have one constant loop. And this may, I don't know if this is the right time for this discussion, but I might as well bring it up here. So. So those are the four different spots that would completely finish all of the trails around. So you could start at one point and go completely around the lake and stay on hard surface and get your way back. So my thought was, the little pink one or the purple one, that's the easiest and the cheapest. I don't know if the, the price is.
It's just low here.
And then, you know, the, the DOT put in a huge amount of money on that next to the lake. And it just ends at National Guard Road, so then getting over to where, like at Sandy Beach, it starts with hard service again. Should've got a Macintosh, huh?
Yeah, I know, and that wasn't very, right? There we go, there it is, sorry.
I, I mean, it's expensive. I mean, I can't remember. It's like five point four million dollars, obviously not gonna happen in one year. And probably have to break it up into phases over five to ten years, but at least we have some sort of plan going forward. Like the little pink one would be a great.
Pink one is.
Two sixty?
Three forty-four.
Three forty-four, and that's the cheap one. Yeah, but you know, since you were talking about leaving that one gravel, you know, that, what that reminded me of is you could still get from point A on the top. Down to the bottom by taking hard service, since we're doing the Omen project, that completes that area, too. So it's not super important to make that hard service if we can have another alternate route.
So that's just right along West Har- is that right along West Harmon? Is that where that is? Uh-huh, the pink one?
And we have to work with landowners and figure out what we're gonna do there.
Have we looped in the Bike Association that spends a lot of time on our trails and upkeep and maintenance?
So the last time we talked with the Trail Committee, uh, we mentioned this, that was been several months. And then we were just talking about this and I said, well, now we have a plan, we can bring it to those guys in the Trail Committee and the Bike Association and see if they would like that. So.
And that would connect, uh, the corner of, um, Omen with the, the new bike paths, the new.
Yep.
That'd be great.
Yeah, cuz when you get to that three, that road where there's three, it just ends, and then you get connected to the new cement one. And then the green one would be the last, uh, cuz it's very expensive and it'd be tough and go along the lake, but it gives you an alternate route. I don't remember how much that was, but that's a.
I think that's this one. Two point six million?
So that would be broken up into phases, obviously. Or maybe not, whatever, I guess it depends what you guys decide, but. I think Kevin is always looking for grants.
Nope, I did that wrong. Oh, was that right?
Was it?
Oh, I wouldn't, that's right. This isn't the one I fixed.
So anyway, sorry to go off on a tangent, but that's long-term planning.
No, that's, that's great information.
Yeah.
If we were to move forward with one of these projects, do we think we could apply the grant that we applied for to that?
Mr. Nelson, could we apply that grant or is it specifically in that location?
That would need to go back to the State Committee again, that decides, that determines the grant. They would have to check, and we'd have to put together all of the, the easements and, and everything, too, and they'd have to look it all over. So I can't say yes or no on that. Not definitively. I like that idea.
What else is there?
That's the, um, that's the only item that I had. I wanted to make sure that we, um. Talked about the opportunity for the drainage project that we would like to add that in. Um, I think I heard that direction and then the carpenters and reducing the amount for the fire or Houston Engineering. Work, um, and then it sounds like we're gonna just hit pause on that railroad trail grant and project.
So I'll just talk about the golf course a little bit since we have golf course people in the audience. I know John Dosher wanted us to read something. I don't know if we're supposed to read that or not.
Yeah, I did send it out to him. Let me find that.
You know, my opinion still remains the same, that it's an enterprise fund. That doesn't mean we can't, obviously, give them the money.
Okay.
But go ahead and read.
So John wanted me to share this email during the meeting. He says he has a concern regarding the budget that he'd like to be considered. The latest request for the golf course project is nearly one million dollars. Being an enterprise operation, the goal is to be self-sustaining. A selling point for the golf board is that five new holes would be for the kids, which raises the question, will the kids not be allowed on the regular course? If the additional holes are to ease the pressure on how busy the course is, they should be making a lot of money. Roughly ten percent of the population plays golf nationally. Mitchell has two courses to share that number. And then he said, I have the number of, the, the numbers on the watering bill, uh, for twenty. What the watering bill would be for the twenty-three holes when the lake is drained. Maybe we should consider reducing water and sewer, which would benefit e- anyone, everyone, excuse me, and he says, are my three minutes up? So this came from council member, George, uh, Dosher.
John Dosher. So, you know, I understand that this is a little different, but you know, in the spirit of the enterprise fund, I know we can do whatever we want. But when we wanna do a water project, we raise rates. When we wanna do a landfill project, we raise rates. When we wanna do. Other than the Corn Palace, I'll give you that, we just raise rates. And. My, so how much was it, the general fund contribution of this, what it's proposed? It's not a million dollars, right? It's four-hundred-and-seventeen thousand, right? So John, so John said a million, but it's four-hundred-and-seventeen thousand.
I think he was just saying that the project is a million dollars, yeah.
But the actual burden to the taxpayer is four seventeen. I would personally like to see it as a loan and just have it paid back. That way it's a compromise. Of course, I don't get a vote in this, so it doesn't matter anyway, but you know, I've had quite a few people reach out to me, just, they don't think we should subsidize a golf course. And that's just their opinion, and I share that opinion and. At the end of the day, I don't think it matters here because I don't get to make that decision, but I just wanted to speak my, my piece.
Anybody else have to talk, want to talk about that at all, or?
Uh, I'll just say a couple of things here, uh. Most of you know I ran a business for twenty-five years like an enterprise fund. If I didn't have the money, I went to the bank and borrowed the money. I just, I'm, I'm really stuck on the enterprise fund. As I was when Mayor Everson sat in that seat, I sided with him that there's a reason that we have it. And I really wish we would abide by it. Uh, I do think it's a great project. I watched the whole meeting. Uh, obviously. Most of the people sit around that table are biased cuz they're golfers. Uh, no secret, I'm not a golfer, uh. And I understand what they're saying about during the game, but it comes back to what Councilman Saber said is. You're telling us we're the best golf course in the state. And they, they said that in a roundabout way during the meeting, so I just don't know why. And I know they didn't make the decision to, they discussed the rates, but they didn't make the decision what they're going to do. I think that should come into play and, uh. I have had this discussion with one of the, the board members about loaning them the money. And I brought it up the last meeting and I've talked to Mayor Hanson about it. That is, I guess, what I would say a last resort for me, but I will not go along with giving them, uh. The four-hundred thousand dollars, strictly because it's an enterprise fund. Not because I don't think that it's, it's not a good project or they didn't go out and raise half the money. That is appreciated, but it's just, I can't get past the enterprise fund.
I would also like to add one thing real quick. So I did, we did the math on, you know, we're spending one point two million dollars out of the lake loan. We figured how much if we would've just paid that towards the lake loan, it would save us four-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand dollars in interest. So applying this to balance the budget is costing us an additional four-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. Of interest at that time, or it could be a savings, is what I'm saying. So your opportunity cost on this is another four fifty, just to let you know.
Stephanie, can you go back to the Excel sheet with the cost of the project? Cuz I, I believe the general fund contribution is six-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand, is it not?
The amount coming from general fund is four-hundred-and-seventeen thousand. These were just budget changes to make up the six thirty-six, so we have cash being applied from reserves. Council cut this item out of their budget. They were going to do an equip, uh, a loan re- a, a payment on that loan for the equipment. Which they will not be able to do because they will not have the cash to do that. So those reductions were, that was the offset within their budget. This is what's coming from general fund, the rest is coming from their donations and cash available. And actually, maybe this would show this better, um. So here you can see the transfer in from general fund. We have the cash applied that we talked about. They have two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars now being added to revenue for donations. Um, council removed. Um, council removed the wedding agent that was budgeted, added in the golf course fees improvements and then. Took out the loan payment for the equipment, which equated to how much was needed to offset, the rest comes out of their fund reserves.
I mean, my ideal would be to not, not spend the money at all out of general fund, but the second. I think good compromise would be figure out some sort of loan repayment over ten years, that way everybody wins, they get their project. The taxpayers get their money back and everything operates kinda like an enterprise fund, however. I was gonna read the definition of an enterprise fund, it basically just says the intention is to operate it as a business and no business could come to the city and just get free money. Well, that's not true, I guess some businesses may, maybe that once in a while, but. In the spirit of, I mean, intention, the intention is to, you know, and I would intend to follow that intention, that was what I would. I'd like to see. And I guess, well, why don't, are we gonna open this up for public comment? I guess as soon as I saw your face, it sparked another thing in my mind where. Anyone can make that decision.
Good eve- good evening, my name's Doug Backland, um. In the conversation of an enter- enterprise fund, are, are we charging administrative costs for? Stephanie's time and Michelle's time for paying all the bills and that?
No, we actually came up with all the things. Yes, well, it's like water, so.
Yeah, so.
There's a, we did make a list of all the things that aren't getting charged, yeah, the administrative costs, uh, you know. Department head doesn't get charged directly to that, no software, no fees, no accounting, no HR, right, exactly. So those are all costs that are not.
That are not in, in the enterprise fund. Other question I got, so it was brought up earlier about the, um, previous loan on equipment. That there's no deadline date on that, is there interest being charged on that?
Yeah, that would be in accounting, I mean.
How much is that loan for? What, when did it start?
So there is a, it started this year, we just, I don't know if she's actually transferred the cash, but it will be transferred by the end of the year. There's a four percent interest rate assigned to that, council can choose to waive the interest, they can choose to forgive the loan. So it's just really an accounting thing on the, on the books at this point, but. Um, I can tell you how much I don't know. Now you guys are gonna see my crazy spreadsheets.
I want you guys to know Stephanie is fantastic with the computer. For Friday night at Pheasants River Banquet.
Just imagine what you could do with an apple.
Doug, congratulations on the banquet.
It, it went fantastic, we had a little hiccup and we had to go back to your security footage and Stephanie really did help us out on that, so I was.
There's another hiccup, I didn't win anything this year, so.
It was eleven thirty at night and everybody was tired and we had a little boo-boo, but we got it all worked out, so. It went fantastic, Corn Palace staff, thank you.
And, you know, now your face refreshed my memory of. It do- it does scare me to know that someone else has another golf course in town where we are, and I know it doesn't seem like we're competing with them because they don't have a short course, but. Anything that makes one golf course more appealing, which, if I was a customer, which one am I gonna go to?
You know, I struggle now as a taxpayer funding it, I really do, that my tax dollars are going to, to that, so. Just my opinion.
Dan, can you answer the question that John brought up as far as the, um, the youth are not gonna be allowed on the, on the golf course? I'm assuming that.
Obviously, that's not gonna happen.
But we just need to clear it up.
Um, I don't know where that came from, I don't know what he meant by it, um, you, you done, Doug?
I was waiting for an answer. Go ahead, Dan.
Um, I don't know where that came from, I don't know what kids, you know, what he, what he's talking about, um. I, I, I read that about five times trying to figure out where he was going with that. And, uh, I don't know what he meant, I mean, kids can come out and use the practice green, yes. Um, kids use the driving rate, they can use it, they gotta buy the balls, to go to the course, they gotta pay. So, I, I have no idea what he meant by that and it wasn't clarified. But, um, some of the other things I asked, Stephanie, do we ever figure in our, our two percent city sales tax? So like, you know, we're doing over north of, of a million dollar sales, so there's, there's twenty thousand dollars, is that ever? No.
Figured for what, what are you saying?
Is that for city income?
Um, no, we don't separate that out for any of the city facilities that charge sales tax.
And I didn't want to say this stuff if I was wrong, so. And then, uh, then the entertainment tax, that's without all the events we have, the money you bring into town. The, uh, the sales tax, the, the, the entertainment tax from the bar, um, golfers. Stay or they go out and eat and they drink, um, whatever they drink. Um, it's not, it's not the added income, none of that's there, we're like the two percent sales tax, that's directly into the twenty thousand a year. The one point five, I think it is entertainment tax, one point five now?
What are you talking about? Percent?
One percent. Right, that's tourism taxes, one point five. So then, then the, uh, that's not figured in there and that's added income to the city. You know, um, you can nitpick on the expenses, you nitpick on the income indirectly that it brings to the city. Um, the entertainment it brings to the city, um. You know, as far as e- everything we have, uh, we got a nice product, it brings people to town, it makes the town look good. They spend money in town, I don't know where you get a figure on that, but, um, you know, it, it's huge for Mitchell. So, um, anyway.
But if we don't improve this project, we don't lose any of that, so.
Two hundred and forty-two thousand dollars roughly.
Are you answering, are you, which question, which question are you answering right now? Oh, okay.
Can you say that number one more time, Stephanie?
Two hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. What was the original outstanding balance?
They haven't bid anything, it's just being done this year. Um, the cart loan or the, the previous loan that was on the books, the mayor had Michelle or had Kevin do the repayment of that. So the only existing loan they have is for the cash this year to purchase the equipment that they did in lieu of financing and. Dan, you probably remember, it was like a, I think it was a seven percent rate and so. We charged our current interest rates that we are getting in, um, in, in our savings accounts to offset the difference. Do you remember the total dollar amount on that loan? Two hundred and forty-two, I can't.
That's correct, the total equipment I believe was three twenty-four, but the loan amount came out to two forty-two.
That's what I thought, okay.
Our word president Jeff McEntee is here and he had a few comments I'd like, uh, that he wanted to say.
Yeah, I know you've been itching to get up the microphone, Jeff, so why not?
Thank you, I'm not combining tonight. Although I should be, uh, um, just get a quick reference to the two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollar equipment loan. I believe, if I'm right, we've already paid that money out of our cash. That money has been paid for the equipment, we're waiting for reimbursement to come back in.
But we've factored that as, when I've estimated your cash balances, I'm assuming that transfers happened. I don't know if Michelle's done it or not yet.
Gotcha, okay.
And, and that's because we didn't do it last year because the equipment wasn't paid for until this year. So it wouldn't have made sense for the city to transfer the cash over to the golf fund before they've even purchased the equipment.
Right, and so, uh, you know, to, to address the, I got a couple of things, I guess, uh. The, the enterprise issue, um, and I've had conversations with some of you over this, this issue and some of them are philosophical, I guess. We've always met our operational expenses and what we're, we're looking for here and. Equipment I would look at as an operational expense. And I supported taking that loan out and paying interest on that as a quasi-business to, to do that. This is a capital improvement to the golf course, I look at that entirely different. And if we sold Lakeview Golf Course today, it would not go into the golf enterprise fund. It would go into the city general fund, it is an asset that is owned and controlled by the city of Mitchell. It is not owned and controlled by the golf fund or the, the enterprise fund. So when we set rates and do our, uh, um, our budget. We look at what our expenses are, what our anticipated expenses are, what our anticipated revenue is, and we do treat it like a business. But it is a city-owned facility and the benefits of that facility. Extend far beyond the parking lot of the golf course, it, 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 it does, it's an asset to the city. As you know, this was a joint project with, uh, as it started out with our original phase three project and the interior of the course and. The support just wasn't there and I understand we compete with everybody else for these general fund dollars and I appreciate that. And I appreciate the opportunity to have these conversations about that. The support wasn't there for that, but. The support that we've had from our golfing community in Mitchell for the short course was overwhelming. Um, as I've mentioned many times, this was a lower priority item on our master plan. That's been in effect for five or six years now. But once the golfing pub- public saw that and saw that, how that could benefit, especially our kids and the golfers here. Um, we as a board changed that priority and moved it up because of the input from the golfers. Um, we have secured enough money to, to provide more than half the project, I think that's, uh. And we, we've been through this before, when you said skin in the game, I remember that from the last time we were in here on, uh, the phase two project. The last thing I wanna leave you with is that, um, Lakeview has not had any significant improvements. Since I thought it was nineteen eighties, but ever, after a conversation with Kevin Thurman, it was nineteen seventy-six. When the new nine was added to that golf course. And there's been some, you know, the tree plantings and a new green here and some aesthetic things that have happened. But overall, um, the, the game of golf has changed in, uh, almost fifty years. Well, it is fifty years, if it was nineteen seventy-five. In two thousand and twenty-three, we set a record at Lakeview for the number of rounds played. At twenty-five thousand rounds, never thought that would ever be achievable. Twenty twenty-four, we did thirty-seven thousand rounds out there. And this year at our board meeting, Eric, he brought the numbers to us, we're gonna be touching thirty-nine thousand rounds this year. Uh, astronomical. So we talk about recruitment and retention and we've got a hundred and fifteen kids in the two. Uh, two-month youth programs we have out there. And what an opportunity to keep those kids as future members, future golfers. Um, and I encourage you to support this project. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
How much did you raise your rates last year?
Uh, about five percent across the board.
How much did your expenses go up last year?
Uh, I don't know, I have to. Ask somebody that does that. We're gonna say five percent.
Yeah.
I, I can't look at that.
Yep, yep, we can show you, but.
The mayor did have me put this together because he wanted to see what the actual revenue and expenses have been for the golf course, this is what I was looking at. Um, it's not fair to, for me to look at last year because there was that project funding there and that normally.
So we took that out to make it fair.
So.
We also added back depreciation.
Question and it's one that we deal with when we do set rates and. Mayor and I had a conversation last year about this very issue, first time we had a, a meeting together. He asked me that same question, how much did you raise rates? And I said, uh, five percent, he said, it's not enough. And I said, okay, let's start with this. And, uh, I, I said, well, let me tell you how we come up with that. And like I mentioned earlier, we look at what our anticipated expenses are, that's number one in a business, how much expenses are we anticipating having? And then we look at, how do we sit compared to other publicly owned golf courses of the same size stature? City-wise, we don't compare Sioux Falls, we don't compare Rapid City, they're two different animals, uh, but we look at, excuse me. Yankton, Brookings, Watertown, Aberdeen, Pier, Huron, um. We look at where we sit with, uh, with those various, uh, um, public courses. And we look at what the market will bear. And one thing I told the mayor was, I said, honestly, we could raise our rates forty percent and not lose a nickel. I firmly believe that and that's exactly what he said.
Do it. Just kidding.
The problem with that is, is that this is a municipal golf course, it's not a country club. And the reason municipal golf courses were created back in the nineteen twenties was because golf was an exclusive elitist sport. Your average person could not afford to play the game of golf, it was, uh, it was for the high society people. And what happened was municipalities such as this. Saw the constituents that they had that had an interest in doing this and so they created municipal golf courses all around the United States. And Lakeview is one of those. Fireside Country Club was here several years before Lakeview was, but it was a country club.
No yelling, we'll talk about that later.
Which was which? Okay, well, Lakeview was in nineteen twenty-five, I thought it was twenty-seven. Okay. Regardless. E- each one served their purpose, the country club had, uh, typically in, in around the country has higher rates. Has less volume and provides an opportunity to, for people to participate in the sport without a lot of crowds, a lot of activities. They provide other amenities, pools, tennis courts, other things like that in a country club atmos- atmosphere. Municipal golf course is for, who puts that there? The, the municipality. And so, and what I told the mayor was, I said, we could raise our rates significantly, but what we're gonna eliminate or. Turn away are the people that are really paying our bills right now. Are those individuals that, that can't afford those higher rates. And if you look at the number of rounds that we have and the amount of play that we have and the amount of income that we have, I think it's a pretty successful model for. For Mitchell and for our, uh, our golf course, so that's what we do when we, we set rates.
I, I, I need to point out too, um, this top line on here shows the revenue. And how it's increased over the set, last several years, that's without any general fund transfers. Um, I upped the budgeted revenue request to six sixty. The request that was made by the department was closer to twenty twenty-three level and this year we're at seven forty-six. So if you're not anticipating a decrease in revenue, it's gonna be, it's gonna, this was the original bu- budget request was six sixty. And we had more than that in twenty twenty-four and we're already above that by a hundred thousand almost this year. And this is why it's important to budget for the actual revenue that you anticipate. Cause otherwise it looks like it's gonna need general fund subsidy when it really doesn't because it's supporting at the end, so. My only, um, suggestion and recommendation, which I have shared with Kevin as well, is they need to be more. This needs to be more accurate in what you actually anticipate and not underestimating so that you say, well. We, we came so far above budget, well, it wasn't an accurate estimate of what we anticipated revenue to be. Cause if we were being accurate, we'd say, oh, you're gonna have a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars more than it's here than what we budgeted.
I wanna answer that and I've talked to Stephanie about it, but it's impossible to, to guess your revenue, it's weather related, it's, uh. You know, it's economy related, but you have bad year, um, weather, you have rounds down, you have, you have income down. And we're growing so fast, they're moving their, their budget up, but also it's a disaster if you come in seventy thousand below budget. And you spent money because your budget's up and it's a, it's a tough gig and right now we're on the up and, uh, I hope it stays there. But it's, it's a guess and, um.
But every department does that, every department.
Absolutely true, there's two things with budget, there's budget authority and there's cash available to, to spend. And those departments have to have both, if their revenue is dropping in a budget, then they need to cut their expenses to match that. So there's two forms of budget authority, it's the cash available to spend as well as the budget authority. And, but that doesn't mean we underestimate significantly so it looks like it needs a subsidy.
How much is the six sixty on a five-year average income? I bet it's pretty close. Five-year average in income, I bet it's pretty close, six sixty.
If we use the five-year average in income for sales tax?
Oh, yeah, we'd be.
Five-year average.
I know, but we would have to cut from your current budget proposed this year, we don't do that with general fund budget, we don't use the average.
Just ask what the five-year budget was for income.
I mean, you should add what you have and add three percent roughly, right, based on.
But at a minimum, if you're budgeting for your rates to go up, your revenue should.
Right.
Be reflecting that.
Stan, I'm just asking for the five-year average for income.
And the only reason why I'm saying that is because they do better than what the budget request usually looks like. They do a lot better than that.
Jeff, I'm gonna ask maybe a difficult question for you to answer, but I'm curious. Do you have any idea? How much of your, how many of your players are coming in from out of town that might be, that are maybe people that live in other areas or tournament wise, uh, what you're, what you're bringing in from other communities? The reason I ask is because we always, you know, we always look at, uh, increase in sales tax revenues when things are happening at the golf course or they're happening, you know, even just on a day-to-day basis, what you have that you might be bringing.
Yes, Jeff came prepared with those numbers. Yeah, Kevin still has an iPhone five, so it's like this big. It's a little guy.
I do have an answer for you, just off the top of my head. Out-of-town greens fees, public versus, okay. Sixty-five hundred paying green fees, public fees, two thousand outside of the Mitchell area, forty-five hundred Mitchell, Mitchell residents. So two thousand of the sixty-five hundred that are greens fee payers. And then thirty-one thousand five hundred from membership play, play over tournaments and events. So of the sixty-five hundred greens fee paying individuals, two thousand were from outside the Mitchell area. So third.
And so, like, when you consider this short course, um, I'm curious, like, is this something that you anticipate adding to that number? Like, you think families will come in and and I don't mean to be putting words in your mouth or leading the witness or whatever, but I'm just curious. Like, do you anticipate that this is something, again, that will bring more people to our community that maybe weren't coming anyway?
I I don't know the answer to that. Um, I don't know that that's going to be a destination issue. It'll certainly be enhancement issue when they're there. Sometimes, I shouldn't say sometimes anymore, when you have thirty-nine thousand rounds at your golf course. I know Eric has people that come in wanting to play without a tee time. And if a tournament is booked up, and some of these tournaments are multiple day tournaments, this provides them with an opportunity other than just the range to go play. Me personally, I'm looking at it more as an investment in these individuals that are starting out. And I helped with both the first tee and Eric's program. And it was way better than I even imagined with the number of kids that are out there. And their number one fear of talking to these little tykes is going out onto the real golf course. That it's this big intimidating thing. And we've even, we even have family tees out there in the fairway where they can start at like a hundred and fifty yards and play the course that way. This is even, um, more miniaturized than that. These, these holes are fifty to a hundred yards at the most. And what an opportunity, um, for those kids to go experience it without the pressure of having to have a tee time or be intermixed with people coming in behind them and stuff like that. So. I see the benefit more local, but I do see the potential, um, there as well.
What do you anticipate if I came out there just to play the short course? I'm not a member or nothing. What's the cost going to be?
For you, five hundred dollars.
I would have guessed more.
I would have said four hundred.
Yeah, per hole.
We haven't, there's going to be a fee established with it. We haven't talked about how, and that's actually one of the reasons. Because the the original architect proposed it on the south end of our driving range. And when we looked at that, we thought it's going to be real hard to control from the clubhouse that far away. And we've got this land that is not being utilized except for the bowling green as a practice area. And we have the trees. And when we started looking at it, we looked at the the contour of the ground. The trees are there. I mean, it's like it's ready-made for a built-in small course with some aesthetics with it. We don't know as far as, we haven't talked that far about what the fee, if it would be included in a membership with a short course endorsement or, you know, obviously, if it's, if it's youth, we're going to keep it as cheap as we can. But. It's the best I can do.
Am I right to say there's some land acquisition costs here?
No, there's not.
I thought there was two acres we needed to come.
No. No, we, uh, there's, there's additional acres there. We don't own it. We haven't talked to anybody in, uh, other than just in passing about the potential. So when we looked at this, we looked at land we currently have. So, and that's what we're running with now.
Okay, so I have another question out of ignorance. I did ask you on the phone is how can, uh, land that is already set up for a golf course cost two hundred thousand dollars a hole? I mean, you could buy a house for that.
I've asked the same question. And when, when we did the master plan initially and had the eight phases, we we were all looking at that going, well, that's kind of, there's a lot of money involved in this. And then COVID hit, and then we added thirty to forty percent to everything that was on that list. And the the costs have just gone through the roof. In our phase two, as you know, we had to come back for more because the the bids were so high on that, that project. Now, there's been some settling in that over time, but you know as well as anybody, that stuff never comes all the way back. So to to answer your question, why the costs are so high for stuff like this, I mean, you're planting grass, you're moving dirt, and you're putting in irrigation in the ground. But it to do it right and with a golf course and going through phase two like we did, the the amount of engineering that goes into that is pretty impressive because of sloping, drainage. The greens have to be, have the right mixture of, uh, seed, sand, dirt, so that the water perforates down. Like even our bunkers, they have drains in the bottom. I never knew bunkers had drains, but they're engineered in there so they go off and you don't have a puddle in your, in your bunker. So tremendous amount of engineering that goes into any of these projects on a golf course.
Okay, last question, trick question. If you own this and this is your personal golf course and you wanted to do this, what would you do?
On this project?
Mm-hmm.
Hundred percent.
Yeah, but where would you get the funding?
Well, I'd, I'd go to Mike Bathke. Yeah.
Five hundred dollars a hole, you have it pretty quick.
So I did update this because it said needed, but I just want to clarify, that's already included.
So before you step away, maybe this is a different question for the guy that runs the golf course. What is the anticipated expense to water and maintain these extra five holes? Are we gonna? I I I'm concerned you're digging yourself a hole here by, I know you've got to keep it reasonable to get these young kids to keep playing, and that's great. Otherwise, they're getting in trouble. But are we going backwards with the financials by doing this? You're saying that starting this and adding on the expenses but not adding on the income, you're going to start trending downwards? Yeah, yeah. Exactly. You don't know because you don't know your rate yet. I get that, but I just think that's one thing that if this moves forward, you really need to look at with your rates is you you can't offer it for free, obviously, but you've got to keep it affordable for these young kids to play it. But we can't keep going backwards because then you're never going to pay the loan back to the taxpayer. It's not me. It's the taxpayer. That's who I speak for when I say this about the enterprise, mine is the taxpayer. And I just, I have serious concerns when you create five more holes. And I I agree with you and it's, it's a lot of money. I'll go dig you five holes out there and leak it is pasture bull.
Trying to answer a little bit, you, that, that factor is going to have to be in expenses and on your green fees when you set your green fees and memberships after it's done. Because they'll have to go up accordingly to add whatever the extra expenses is, if it's ten thousand a year or whatever it is. They will have to be go up. Water is minimal, you know, but the mowing and fertility and and, uh, but the rates and the green fees got to affect that to cover that.
Did we figure out what the average expenses were per year?
Yeah.
Look at this guy. He just loves to, can't get away.
If I may take a moment of your time, I have a little experience from this area.
Yeah.
What an exciting time. What an exciting time to be in Mitchell. And I want to thank you for the leadership that I've seen over the last few years with all the projects. I've never seen so much activity, construction, and new businesses, things going on in town. It's probably the most exciting, uh, year in history. With that being said, this project, um, as Dan and Eric can tell you, there isn't a whole lot of money in youth lessons. And a lot of private courses don't offer them. But we have had, board members had to volunteer to take on these young kids that are coming. And if you build it, they will come. The the youth lessons at Lakeview, these guys had to listen to all the members complain about plugging up the course with these kids. If you need this thing to be there, it'll pay for itself and it'll also help both courses. These kids may not be state golfers. They may not be a high school golf team or a tournament player. But they're going to pay greens fees and they're going to buy memberships. And when Lakeview gets as busy as it is now, a lot of them are looking for someplace else to go. Well, you know, I know members that are going to Plankton because Lakeview is too busy. I know them that are going, you know, to, uh, Fire or Wild Oaks, uh, for the same reason. As Lakeview gets busier and as we grow these young kids, it's going to be exciting, the numbers. We saw those things with Tiger Woods effect. And that died out in two thousand. Then COVID hit and boom, everybody wanted to be outdoors and golf. You know, we're seeing, that's going to continue for a long time. And this is our nurse crop. This is our seed hole for these kids to bring more money to both facilities in Mitchell. Thank you.
That was Kevin Thurman for everyone at home. Okay, you have an answer for Dan's question about the five-year average? You did all that doodling, so.
There's your three, five, and four-year average for revenue and expenses.
Assuming expenses include the, uh, phase two.
Yeah, which is probably right here, right? The seven twenty? Yep, that would be without it. I don't know if there was other capital that year besides phase two, but. And then one thing to point out too, and I know that this is on here, but some of that is the city has had a, um, health insurance premium holiday for several years. So, um, the good thing is that this would have normally been charged to the fund, but was not charged due to the holiday. Because our self-insured fund was fully funded, so we did, we for, we did not transfer those remaining premiums in the, in those years. And that amount would have changed the total on the bottom if it had been charged as anticipated. Not that any of that matters, but.
I don't think we changed anyone's mind here tonight, but if, anyone else got anything else for budget?
I do. Um, I spoke in great detail with Jeff Logan about the mayor's proposal to bring in the agency. Um, I'm just blanking on the name right now for the fifty thousand dollars, for the retail strategies. As we look at affecting the lake repayment fund already, I I would like to see us reconsider adding that in. And then, um, as we look at, um, contingencies, reboosting the lake fund at that time. I think that, uh, hitting the ground running January one with that agency will only put us ahead. Um, and waiting until contingency is, uh, just three months of delay that we don't necessarily need. Um, I don't know that it's going to be in the grand scheme of things the end all be all, but I think that would be something to consider. Me and Jeff Logan had a really healthy conversation about it. Um, and, uh, he got me on board with that concept.
I'm still really in favor of it as well. Anything we can do to grow the town, I think is, is worth doing. I'm sure people are thinking, what about the golf course right after that season?
Would we, um, want to consider other proposals besides the one that we heard? Or would you like, are you thinking we'll stick with that?
Well, there's three other companies. We talked about it today. There's three other companies. We just have to decide who we like the most, I guess.
Their fee structures are all pretty similar.
Right, it just depends, you know, I don't really know that anything is going to change it. Like, I think everyone could agree, we want more things in town.
And so I think to your point, Susan, I think I would prefer to have the fifty thousand there and then look at the other three companies and make a decision at a later date.
Retail recruitment company and then decide. Who's the best?
Sorry, I have my microphone on. I feel like that's, um, as we look to find ways to continue to grow our community and to grow our sales tax base. I think that's a probably a really good investment.
Anyone else? Stephanie's looking for consensus. She's got her, she's taking a tally.
That's true.
Maybe, uh, mayor, I'll just add quick our meeting today that we had. Mike and and Kimberly came across the street and Mr. Bathke and and the mayor and Kevin and myself and Stephanie was in on a meeting just to kind of discuss, you know, maybe some strategies, some, um, possibility of looking at a study like this, what would we gain from it? They want to go back and kind of brainstorm with with their staff and and their, um, actual board. And, um, and then come back with some type of recommendations or we even talked about things that that we would like to have happen now that they can, wouldn't cost us anything and and they could, uh, put some things together for us. Just as the mayor pointed out, we want to, we want to grow and we want to make for sure that we've, we've got a a good list of all of our assets, um, that are in place. So anyway, um, we we've kind of engaged, um, the development corp and the chamber. And, um, they're going to do some more research. And I'm not saying that that eventually we wouldn't want to do something like this, but they've also came up with some other type of companies that that they thought might help, but they wanted to brainstorm a little bit more and.
Weren't they meeting with their board on Wednesday? I think it was this week they were meeting with the board.
It is, yeah, Wednesday at noon.
I just don't, I would never anticipate them saying, no, we don't want to grow the community by hiring this firm, I guess, is what I would imagine.
So the only, um, comment I need to make is that the finance officer has to put this into the budget document. There has to be public notice. If you have an intention that you want to change this, it'd be, we, we would like to know this now so we can have that prepared for the first reading.
When is the first reading?
At the next meeting.
So we have to decide today, you're saying?
Well, it would be preferable for staff's time and putting together the correct document for your review. Counsel can still make changes. But if you know you want to change something, it'd be really good for us to have that now.
So so does anyone have any objections to hiring a recruitment company?
I'd like to hear what they have to say after their meetings on Wednesday myself. They're going to gather their information with their board. That's what they said they're going to do today.
And and so I think that that is good. I just think that if we put it in the budget now and they come back and say, these are the people we would like to look at, it's still going to have a fee associated with it. I know that there's some things that they can do, um, for zero dollars. But I think that this gives a placeholder for us to come up with an option. Um, and that's what I'm looking for. It's just that ability in the start of the new fiscal year to immediately go out and find someone to fill that gap that, or help, uh, continue to grow and recruit business to Mitchell in those areas that, uh, we can.
Yeah, I would agree.
Well, maybe it needs to be renamed a little bit, not necessarily for a study or anything like that, but maybe a recruitment tool for sales or something like that and just.
Retail recruitment.
Retail recruitment?
Right, you know, maybe just earmark that way because depending what we, hopefully you can team up with. Right, you know, maybe just earmark that way because depending what we, hopefully you can team up with across the street and all that kind of stuff. Some funding, obviously, more than likely will be needed to some extent. Maybe not fifty, maybe it's a much lower number, but I would assume. I agree with you that I would assume somebody's gonna need to be needed, so.
I'd be just fine with that.
Does anyone else oppose it or give a, give her a thumbs up? John just texted me, yes, no, I'm just.
We don't have to spend it. But but if we decide to do, move forward with something with the development corp or whoever, and and one of the things that intrigued me was we were discussing through this, through, when we were having the discussion, is the leakage. You know, ninety whatever, three, whatever the million.
Yeah, ninety-three million.
So, I mean, i- is there other ways to come up with it? May or may not. This might be the very best solution. But I I don't think we've probably come to any conclusions at this point, but I wouldn't have a problem with putting a recruitment in in the budget, and then if we use it, it's there. If not, we can continue to get, gather more information.
Okay, that's four. We need one more. Okay. Anything else? Budget changes? We got the printers? We got everything else? Now we can all look forward to getting pulled over. All right, there's anything else?
Mr. Bathy's question was, do we need an answer on the golf course? At this point, it's in. So it's only if you guys are changing it. Or if you need immediately change anything that, how it was shown. Which is right here. That's what we had for changes.
And we're balanced.
Yep, I have a list.
Okay, anyone else before we adjourn?
Hey, I'm just wanna address a a question that I received. I know that we all got a letter today. And one of the common things that people request is when we're talking about things that are being paid for out of the um, general fund, they want us to reduce water rates, for example. And I just, uh, I think it's one of those, I I understand the misconception and do you want to just explain that one more time, just so that they understand why it is that when we do something like this or that they're completely different?
Water rates, water's an enterprise fund.
Just like the golf fund. I mean, I suppose if council wanted to use general fund money, you could, but the way we have approached our utility accounts is that they are self-supporting. It is our, our utility and sanitation are self-supporting funds. But there isn't, I'd be saying you can't, I just, you haven't done that.
But I, and I think that that's just an important distinction that I, that people, I want people to understand that they're different funds.
But there's nothing stopping us from doing it, right? Technically.
We'll have more discussion on, we, when we first mapped out our increases, we went through twenty twenty-seventh. Well, I I think, I think it's beginning of the year or first part of the year, we'll be discussing it. And maybe, maybe there's an opportunity that that we don't have, we can slow it down, or we can, we can pause, we can do it. Those are all options, and I know the mayor and Stephanie are putting some information together that eventually we'll be sharing, but I I think that's a good point, that it is completely separate, and so we have to take that into consideration. But I I think we've got some positive information coming, and you guys are working on it, and I think it's, it'll be well-received.
All right, anything else before we adjourn, or do we want to stretch this thing out till midnight? All right, there's nothing else, we're adjourned.